Welcome back, welcome back to the Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025 Pembroke Select Board Meeting. Please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello. We have a scheduled appointment with Veterans Agent David McPhillips to review an article to increase veterans exemption and additional 50% of personal exemption amount and possible rescheduling to a future town meeting. Hello, David. Welcome.
Hello, everybody.
How are you?
Good.
Thanks for coming.
So this is about the HERO Act that was passed by the legislature in 2024, okay, last year. So what it does is veterans that are disabled, all veterans who own property, get a tax abatement of $400. Veterans that are 100% disability get a tax abatement for $1,000 if they own property, and the state reimburses that, okay, 75%. So in this HERO Act proposed by the governor, she would like to double that. So if you earned a disability, instead of a 400, you would get 800. And instead of the 100% disabled veterans, instead of $1,000, you would get $2,000. The catch is on this is the state would not reimburse us. This would have to be passed by local option, and this would be up to the town. For this, okay, so this would go on the warrant for the people to vote for at town meeting. Okay, so I talked to Jeannie today up in the assessors' office. If it doesn't go on this town warrant, then it has to be put off, say, to fall. Is that right, Bill? And if it is, they would not get the benefit of the tax relief in 2026. All right, so that's just quickly how it works, okay? So John, John's been aware of it. Bill, anybody else have you heard of that before?
Do you have any strong feelings about this?
Well, I would like, the way it is now, the abatements have been the same.
I'm sorry about that, folks. We have the ceiling. You're right there.
How about I just?
You're okay. Keep going.
Find a way.
You just stand there, done.
I will, I will.
No, I got it. Okay, so the tax abatements have been the same for quite a while, as long as 15 years. Some of the towns have done it, such as Quincy. Quincy says that the cost to taxpayers is very minimal, okay? But I get it. Other taxpayers would have to share the burden to this. That's why I think it's important to come to the town floor and people get to discuss it. I'm sure there'll be arguments of all sorts. So the only feeling I have, make it available, thank you. Make it available so people have a chance to discuss it and vote on it, all right? So anybody?
Just to clarify, your recommendation is to keep it on, do more for the spread, correct?
Yeah, only because if you put it off, then by fall, if you put it off to fall, then veterans will not get that benefit in fiscal 2026. That's what Jeannie at the assessors' office told me today, okay? And she has figures about what it will cost us, all right? So.
What are those figures, Dave? Do you know or Bill?
Yeah, funny you should ask.
Look up it, please.
I have the neighbor in front of me.
Sorry, I have it.
Well, they want you to read it, so people have one on their screen.
So it would, okay, so quickly and the easiest way to understand it, for fiscal year 2025, and if you granted 100% for all veterans, that's the $400 one and the $1,000 one, I have a figure that it would cost an additional $113,000 to the tax base. All right.
So the budget sustains. So is it a challenge for us right now? It's a huge financial challenge. We don't have that kind of money available in our budget today, which is, we become worried that we're going to have to take other actions to cut other budgets for us to be able to do this or spend more one-time monies or spend, in my opinion, enough one-time monies, it's not sustainable to continue. The other concern I have is that if we broke this and we ever want to exercise the other clause that would allow us to increase all exemptions, which many cities and towns do, they simply do a cross-the-board increase to every single exemption, blind, senior, economically challenged senior, minor, children, surviving spouse. Those are all very small compared to veterans exemptions. But you would never be able to exercise that under statute because if you did, you would then decrease the veterans exemptions in the future and we would never want to do that. I'm strongly recommending that the board do more research. I've done some since our last meeting when that information became available to us. And I'm recommending that we exercise some discretion and come up with a plan where we're going to look at increasing potentially all of our exemptions under this statute, which is a lot. It's still a local option, and then we still would eat that cost. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't, in my opinion, we wouldn't increase them 50% or 100%. We were going small works. And what some towns do is increase them 2.5% to try to offset the, keep them up in the proposition 2.5 where we know the town's budget is going up 2.5% a year.
So in place, it is not going to change, is the veteran can receive a $400 exemption or a $1,000 exemption if they're 100% disabled?
There's actually five different veterans exemptions which range from that range all the way up to a complete, complete tax write-off.
Those are in place now?
They are in place now, and those are all reimbursed at a percentage from the company to back to us.
But as to Dan's thing, it will not change?
They will not.
Current vets who actually take advantage.
What Lee Ann just said is absolutely correct. If we didn't put this forward, people would still get the $400 and the $1,000 that they get now, reimbursed by the state. This here, the governor suggests that we double that. The only difference is they're not willing to reimburse us for it, like they do the other abatements.
And just for the board's information, there are several towns that have already not have put this forward and not voted in, and what comes one of us is the answer. And some have passed it, as you noted, Quincy is.
Yep.
And for those of you who understand where I'm coming from, I'm a veteran myself. I'm a huge supporter of veterans. I just think this needs a little more study.
When you say increase all of the exemptions, the ones that includes the veterans?
It includes the veterans, yes.
I don't, go ahead. So are you asking the board to?
Take no action.
Take no action now, but given the time between now and fall town meeting, see if we can get something else?
Okay. Take no action or remove from the warrant, you know what? I don't, if you have my recommendation, that's what I'm going to do.
I have a question. So we've got some figures in front of us here that we were looking at before. $54,000 for 50%, and $108,000 for 100%. Mr. McPhillips mentioned here $13,000. Can you speak to that discrepancy there? Or is it?
So I'm not sure whether, $113,000 may be an update because they're in the process right now of applying, so those numbers are changing every day in approval process. So they're not 100% complete, but they're getting very close.
And that 113, that you can't, if that's an updated number, is that from 100% adopted?
I got that from the assessors' office today.
Yeah, and we're recommending a 50%.
Yeah, 100%, so it must be from 108 to 113.
Okay, okay.
My only feeling, well, do this as, excuse me, as fast as possible because veterans have already waited a long time.
Does anyone have any questions for David?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up, board action items. Open the annual warrant for discussion, possible removal of Articles 13, 17, and 26, transfer of lots for sale, increase veterans exemption, HRP to extend retirement age, and close the warrant. Thank you, David. At our last meeting, we talked about possibly reopening the annual warrant, remove some articles, and if we still wanted to maybe discuss that, including what we just talked about with David. They were 13, 17, and 26. And of course, if we choose to do so, we'll have to renumber. 13, 13 was the transfer of specific lots for purpose of sale. 17 was the HERO Act that we were just discussing, and 26 was the home rule petition to extend the retirement age of the current police chief. Does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss?
I suggest that we reopen the warrant and discuss each one of these articles in the bill. See if we want to keep them or remove them for the warrant and then close the warrant. That's my suggestion. There's a motion ready, but I'm putting it out there for discussion prior to a motion, I think.
Right, I thought maybe if we discussed the items first and then made the motion, one fell swoop, if we wanted to remove all three, it might be easier, but we can open and discuss.
We still have to open the warrant.
Mm-hmm. Do I have a motion to open?
Move to open, to reopen the annual warrant for the purposes of removing Article 13 to transfer specific lots for the purposes of sale, Article 17 to increase tax exemptions for service members and veterans, and Article 26 to extend retirement age of the police chief, and further to renumber the remaining articles to reflect such removal and close the warrant with no further changes.
Sorry?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, regarding Article 13, transfer of specific lots for purpose of sale. Is there any discussion regarding this article?
It can't go forward without a zoning approval, so we can't exercise it at the spring town meeting. Anyway, I would strongly recommend you remove it.
Move to remove Article 13 from the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 17, accept HERO Act to benefit service members and veterans. Any discussion?
It's a difficult one. You know my feelings on that. I think we, as I said, I'm a veteran, I'm a strong supporter of veterans. I just don't want to forego the opportunity to help everyone else that receives an exemption.
Right, and I agree with that, and I feel like even if we were going to place it, it would make a lot more sense to be on the fall when we could investigate it a little bit more. But I'd be interested to hear what others.
We need to see what we can afford.
Mm-hmm.
Very generous of her to open this up and let us pay for it. So let's decide what we can do.
I'm there, and you know, I'm dealing with budget wars every day.
Same.
Move to remove Article 17 from the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Article 26, home rule petition to extend retirement age of current police chief.
So he has asked to remove it. You know, if he doesn't want to go forward with it, then it is what it is.
Move to remove Article 26 from the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to close the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Finance article presentation by town manager, annual 1 through 5, 9, and special articles 1 through 3.
So if I may, I just want to do the last two budgets, the two enterprise budgets, real quick.
Please.
And then we'll jump right into that, so you will have seen all of the budgets. You have seen all the general fund budgets, but you have not seen the water enterprise fund or the solid waste enterprise fund.
Okay.
Dan Sullivan's here tonight. Everyone knows Dan. Well, I don't know if everybody in the audience knows Dan, but the board knows Dan. Dan is our water superintendent, so, yeah, it's on. So as I just said, water enterprise, solid waste enterprise would be the final two budgets that you have not seen. I mean, dive right into the water enterprise. The director's salary is gone. The director no longer provides 50% of the support for the water department. We have now an operations manager, water superintendent, which is Dan. And so this first slide is all wages and salaries, and it's 100% contractual, one CBA and one contract, individual personnel contract. You can see that there's actually a savings by removing the director's salary. There is an increase there. This does not include a settled collective bargaining. We are still bargaining with the water folks, so that will be dealt with at the fall town meetings. Any questions on the salary piece? I can go into more detail if you would prefer, but we've seen this.
Salary piece is the biggest jump.
Oh, these 2024 actual?
Yeah, and those are just steps. That is not, well, 2024, actually, we had a substantial number of vacancies.
Okay, so we refilled those vacancies. Okay.
Yeah, that's the big jump that you're seeing.
Okay. Yep, that's fine.
Moving on to first layer of expenses, they range from telephone, gasoline, office supplies. Printing and stationery is because the, our annual report that goes out is no longer going to be, it's going to be twice a year now, so obviously there's an increase there. And the other big change was, is it on here?
Nothing else.
I think it's on the next page. So this is what it is, you know, across the operate the department. Any questions related here? So, whoops, I guess that's it. Where is the debt portion? I'm missing a slide. In your package is this, and because the big one is the debt slide. In your package. They have this footage? Yeah.
Does he have it over here?
Now, let me just see if it's on. There it is. Nope, that's not it. So if you go to appendix, the appendix is, there's a page that has, let me find it so I can show you what it looks like. Yeah, it is. So here, it looks like this. The two pieces that you're missing are the debt portion, and that's the biggest piece because I wanted to make sure that I flagged that for you. Yeah, it's.
So the debt service goes from 807,000 from last fiscal year to 2.7 million.
Correct, yeah, and I just wanted to flag that for you because it's a big number. Where am I here? Completely lost now. Yeah, so I just, so it's a total water enterprise budget of 4.9, 4.944069, which is a large jump. The cost of these projects is all built into this. You know, the biggest demand we've had is to improve our water system. Much of our water system has a very large cost for that. So I just want to be clear that this is going to result in a large water rate increase this year that we're working to, working through those details right now. So the water commissioners will see that if town meeting goes this way.
So Bill, to be clear, the board, the public, all water capital projects done in finance through the enterprise fund are not part of the town capital fund.
Correct. I just want to make sure that people are clear that we're not taking from multiple buckets.
No, so an enterprise fund functions as a business, that the ratepayers must pay the cost to operate that business 100%. You can't, once you go to an enterprise fund, you can no longer, no longer charge things to the tax base. It takes it out of the tax base and the ratepayers pay that cost. So it is what it is, and we will see a large, we won't be the highest. We're the lowest right now, and we're not going to go to the highest, but you will see a large water rate increase this year as a percentage. Now, in dollars, it's not going to be, probably most people won't even see a $100 increase, but for some people, that's a, that's a big number, so.
Have you discussed this with the water commissioners?
So we talked about it last year, last calendar year when we met, that this was going to be a big number, and they know it's coming. And they have, the new water commissioners have been very supportive of making sure we maintain our water infrastructure. As you may recall, prior to the current administration, we neglected our water system for a substantial amount of time, and it is what it is. So, but we did discuss where water rates are going at their last meeting.
Right, because the water commissioners set the water rates.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that you're in conversations with them and everyone's going in the same direction.
We need to have another conversation about it, but we, that's if this passes. And we probably should call a meeting and have that discussion so it's fresh in their minds. But they support maintaining the system. And for a few years, we're going to see those costs, and then things will start to stabilize, and hopefully the water will see, you know, some substantial improvements. But it's going to take a little bit of time to get there.
Yeah, these are years-long projects.
Yes, yes, multiple years. Questions on that? Moving on to the solid waste, the first one is obviously the operations. Same as we do with all of our budgets, wages and salaries. We have landfill managers, which means we're all going cap and doing the testing and the recycle center. We have clerical salaries for making sure that all of our bills get paid, that we record all of our tonnage and tipping fees. So we know that when we have to calculate the trash fee, we have the ability to do so. And then we have the recycling, and those are folks that are working helping with when you go to the recycle center. And then obviously, we have some bin delivery stuff that's a very, very small number, but bins get broken, we have to bring them out there. So any questions on salaries? Okay, moving on to costs, I'm going to run through these very quickly. Electricity and heating field is for the recycling center. Bill processing is obviously the cost of process. The solid waste and recycling bills, telephone, telephone alarms. Solid waste disposal is the actual tipping fee at New Bedford. We are in the beginning, the first year of a multi-year, it's an overall 20-year contract. We are in the fourth block, which means we're in the 16th year. We're beginning the 16th year this year. So we have four more years, and then we're going to get, well, I'm just going to say it, we're going to get whacked. You know, not that $666,000 isn't a lot of money, but when we compare those tipping fees, we signed a contract 16 years ago. Things were very different then. Curbside pickup is a cost to actually come and pick up from your toters. Recycling disposal is the disposal for recycling. You can see that those numbers are pretty stable for recycling. We're hoping that the reimbursement numbers go back, so we get back to a 2022 number. I'm not hopeful that we'll get back that small, but we are seeing some trends with higher reimbursements based upon that. One thing I will say, and I'm going to say it publicly on camera and to everyone who is here, if we can keep the damn trash out of the recycling and we only recycle what we're supposed to, it keeps our recycling costs, tipping costs way down, and we get a bigger reimbursement on that. When I got here, we were in excess of 20%, and we're now down, we were down, and I think we still are, below 10%. That is huge. 10% is usually the tipping point where the company is looking for you to be below that number, and you don't pay an additional trash fee as a result of that. Please, 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 don't put trash in your recycling. Your trash fee, it doesn't cost you anymore. We're not a pay-as-you-throw community. Put it in your trash bin, not your recycle bin. Let's work together to keep that cost down.
Curbside pickup jumped 50% between 2023?
Yeah.
Actual to budget?
That was a contract renewal.
That's a, that's a huge jump.
Well, wait a second. Where are we?
I'm looking at 900,000 to 1.3, 1.35 million.
Yep, so, so, so what happened? What happened there was our numbers got to a point, and our contract for tipping forced them to wait, so we had to add a truck for us to be able to do that. There was no other way to be able to pick up every resident that we had to pick up. We had to add a third truck. That's the big push right there.
So you're adding 50% more trucks?
There you go. So, so recycling disposal, obviously, that's the recycling tipping. Recycling hauling is the portion to haul. You know, that's not for the curbside portion of that. That's for hauling from the recycling center and the costs related to those items there. Bid maintenance, self-explanatory hazardous waste, that's for us to participate in Hazardous Waste Day.
June 7th at the Pembroke Recycling Center from 9 to 1.
June 7th in Pembroke this year, 9 to 1, if you didn't hear my colleague over there. So that's that. Monitoring wells, the monitoring wells for the landfill monitoring and testing. Recycle center expense is the operational expense to do that. Office supply, self-explanatory postage, portable toilets. The leach aid is to remove exactly what it is, leach aid from the landfill. Landfill maintenance is for any maintenance we have to do that. The Massachusetts Water Protection Act admin fees, that's a fee we have to pay, dues and memberships, and recycling bins. We're not doing, we're not purchasing recycling bins this year because we have enough in supply for the broken ones. We just have the cost to get them there.
Could you explain the South Shore Recycling Cooperative out of the dues?
Yeah, so, so the dues goes to the South Shore Recycling Cooperative. It's a membership that we participate in. It actually provides us a lot of guidance. The staff participate in that. They help minimally, but they help with some grant information and.
And they give out our household hazardous waste days.
Right, yeah, and they coordinate the household hazardous waste days. What's good about that is you can go not just to Pembroke on June 7th, but you can go to anybody who's a member of the South Shore Cooperative. So there may be one in Hanover or Plymouth or Weymouth, you know, members, and you can actually go and participate in their hazardous waste day. So if you're not available June 7th, look them up and attend one of those others, so.
No charge?
Yeah, free of charge. Any questions here?
Bill, I have a question.
Sure.
Clarify for everyone, the solar units that are at the former landfill, do they directly relate to the solid waste budget?
No.
Or is that separate and apart?
No, it's separate and apart, and we take the credits from that and apply it to all bills. Well, not all bills, because you can't apply it to some. Most of our larger bills, we're actually doing better than, better than we need to. We have credits on our national grid bills as a result of the solar that we're taking in. So, and the schools participate in that also, so it's a really, really good process, so. Any other questions here? Moving on to the debt, this is the debt page that I was looking for for water. This is the solid waste debt. It's pretty minimal overall, and then the reserve fund are $30,000. So explaining indirect costs, so indirect costs are, it's really a two-way street. If, because it operates as a business, the general fund cannot pay costs for the enterprise funds. So both enterprise funds have indirect costs related to them. So fuel, for example, or the time that I would spend developing this budget or the town accountant spends to pay bills, or the treasurer collector spends to process payroll. Those costs must be accounted for and charged to the, to the enterprise fund. So that $61,384 is the accounting of that. And it can go up and down as expenses go up. For those, it will go up. Sometimes expenses go down or stay flat. You know, during the earlier COVID stuff, there were some pretty flat numbers, so. Any questions on this? pretty flat numbers, so. Any questions on this page? Okay, moving on, that's it there. So, if you want, I'll jump right into the warrant. Um, I have slides for almost all of everything that you have. I did not do the, uh, the slides for the planning board, but those are pretty self-explanatory, and Mr. Wondell is here. Is he here?
He is.
There he is, back there, if you have questions on those, so. Okay, if we keep going?
Yeah.
All right, so, um, Article One is a Wage and Cast Classification Plan. Um, that is Appendix A in your package. These slides are really bad. I'll walk through them really quick. Generally speaking, now, I'm going to say, we did a wage and salary survey on these this year. Um, and so, there are some that are not getting the standard increase, that are getting a, a larger increase, and there's a couple that are even not getting an increase in, at all, as a result of that survey. There are positions on this schedule where the individuals are, where the positions don't exist. There's not a body in that position. So, generally speaking, this page is, is one of the one percent numbers. This page is also one of the one percent numbers, the first page being the annual salary. These guys are payday salary, but it's a, a part-time type of position. That's why those salaries are s, s, a lot smaller. Um, the next page is where I want to highlight a few of these things. Um, it's, you have it in your packet as Appendix A, um, looks like this. Um, so, not everyone on this page is a one percenter. Um, so, all of those, from the top to the junior clerk, um, are, except for the senior clerk. Senior clerk is flat based upon some increases that we did before, uh, and, but they are one percent or less. Um, below that, the folks are, it's, the, the increases are based upon a salary survey. I worked with Lance Kennedy, Julia Nie, um, and Diane Pico to get all of these salaries. Um, I will say, across the board, um, we are starting to lag behind when we do salary surveys. We're dropping below, in some areas, our comps below the fifty percent point. You never want to do that. I don't want to be at the hundred percent, but I don't want to be below that point, because that's when you start to lose bodies, and we're starting to see that. We're having trouble hiring a lot of these positions, um, as we go down, um, just because the comps aren't there. Um, so, we have increased them. You can see where those are at. They're not, none of them are above, um, a ten percent. Most of them are in the six percent range.
So, these have all been in action in order to get us to where we need to be?
Correct. And, and the biggest challenge we have are our counselors, our lifeguards, uh, some of the library staff. Um, you know, and the challenge we had there, um, over the last five years, we've seen large increases in minimum wage in Massachusetts, and although we increased the minimum, to the minimum wage, we aren't keeping up with where that pushed some of those salaries to get. So, um, I will note that the program coordinator is a position we had a long time ago, that's been off the scale. We're adding that back. We effectively had a program coordinator that was, um, in as a counselor. Um, that person has left us, um, and we're going to have the challenge to hire somebody. Um, you know, it is what it is.
Are these comps just going from fifty percent? Usually you want to go a little bit, you want to go above the cost.
So, we're, so what we're targeting is that seventy-five percent number.
Okay.
I like to be above that, we just can't afford to do that right now. So, and it isn't a big, unfortunately, isn't a big number, but when you start to do that, it impacts you in every other area, collective bargaining and all of your other numbers, so. And then the final note I want to make, um, and I'm going to say this, um, this page, which is you guys, the assessors and the moderator, early returns are that you're woefully underpaid. Um-
You think, Bill?
I'm going to study that, I'm going to study that over the summer.
We don't do this for the money.
I know, and that's, and that's why, and it's not a big number for the town.
Don't even bring it up.
Yeah.
Because Doc's just going to ask for it to go to zero.
What did he say?
I know, but you know what? I want to be fair. It, it, fair is fair. So, I'm going to share, I'm going to share the-
Call it out.
Okay, all right. We'll talk about it this summer.
Sounds wonderful.
Okay, so that's the pay plan. The total cost to implement this is ten thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Do you want to go through each one? Vote your operation.
It's up to you, however you want to do it.
I think probably we should.
Okay, so this is, um-
That's who your recommendation is.
To, to approve the pay plan as presented. And, uh, vote to approve the ten thousand five thirty-six.
I think we can just move favorable action on Article-
Yeah, you can just move favorable action.
Right.
We'll make the motion later.
I would move favorable action for Article One Wage and Classification Plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on.
Article Two.
Quickly. So, Article Two is the operating budget. You have received that. It is Appendix B in your packet. I have a slide that just shows what that represents, um, so that folks at home can see that. There is a lot more detail than obviously Appendix B. It doesn't fit well on a slide, and no one could see it. So, that's why I chose to use the roll-up that we have here. Um, it is a total cost to the town of seventy-eight million eight hundred and five thousand forty-eight dollars. And you've seen every detailed line item within that budget structure. It's probably a hundred and sixty pages.
Anybody have any questions?
Bill, have you met with advisory on this, and have they taken a vote?
So, advisory has voted favorable action on this, yes.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
I would move favorable action on Article Two Operating Budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Article Three. Article Three is the Water Enterprise as presented, less the, the debt service piece. It is, the detail is on the screen for anybody who wants to see it, um, and that is available in Appendix C in your packet.
Questions, discussion? Do we have a motion?
I would move favorable action on Article Three Water Enterprise Operating Budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article Four is the Solid Waste Operating Budget. Um, again, as presented this evening, it is an Appendix D on your, in your packet and on the screen.
Any questions or discussion? Do we have a motion?
Motion to move Article Four favorable actions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article Five is the Capital Budget. Uh, I'm going to spend a little bit of detail on this. Um, you've seen portions of this. There was some changes from the presentation we made months ago at this point. Um, so, I'm going to go through this in detail. You do have that as, um, in your packets. Uh, let me just show it to you. Sabrina's showing you what it looks like there. So, um, is Appendix E in your packet, if you have it and want to follow along. I'm going to go through this in a little bit of detail. Some of the self is, some of the stuff is pretty self-explanatory. Um, others will take a little bit of time, so. Um, fifty-two inch mower replaces approximately twenty-year-old mower, um, that is on its last legs. I'm surprised they were able to get it to go that long. That is a free cash appropriation. Next item is a line painting machine and stencils. This is to do, uh, some of the smaller line painting that we've found that the cost to contract that exceeds the cost to buy the equipment and do it ourselves. I'm not telling you we're going to paint roadways. We're not. We're still going to contract the painting on roadways, the lines and the, and the fog lines. However, this will allow us to do some parking lot stuff, some minimal crosswalk stuff, and some other, um, painting that the town is required to do.
Question.
Yes.
Uh, so, Bill, there's a major line, uh, highway line painting company in Pembroke, in North Pembroke, and I think we previously, uh, had an agreement with them that they had leftover paint, white and yellow. Uh, they, they had designated roadways in Pembroke that they could use it on, and, and brighten them up.
Okay.
They're throwing it away.
All right, so I-
Have you ever had that discussion with them?
I have not. Um, I will follow up on that. We could probably have an offline discussion too about that real quick, so, um-
I, I don't even know, um, I, I don't know the details about it, but I-
I will find out. I'm, I am not familiar with it. So, and I know that our line painting costs are, are increasing rapidly, and those costs will still be there, because we're not going to, as I said, we're not, this does not paint it, but for seven thousand dollars, we can save a lot of money on, on the smaller stuff, so. Next one is the pavement management, uh, inspection and update. This is mostly a software cost. Um, I strongly recommend we continue that program. It's working incredibly well for us.
AI tech.
So, the next one is, uh, engineering services. Um, and that is for roadway and bridge engineering, and the reason you see two engineering back-to-back, the catch basin engineering is part of our MS four permit. And if you're not familiar with the MS four is, MS four is the, uh, stormwater permit. That's through the US EPA. They funnel through MAS DEP. It has a lot of stringent requirements, and there, and we just, I want to keep that separate so we can calculate those costs. We'll talk about that as we go down the list here a little bit. Um, the next item is a DPW truck. Uh, the truck that it's replacing is basically failed. They have asked for three trucks this year. I'm only giving them one. Um, it's just, unfortunately, all we can afford at this point. Next item is a street sweeper. I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this. We did a cost-benefit analysis, um, and the cost benefit shows that we actually will save money to do the street sweeping ourselves. There is no special licensing required for a street sweeper, so I can go drive it, you can go drive it, anybody can go drive it, uh, once you learn, learn how. Um, that creates, if we can use existing staff to do this work, um, it is, it is a huge savings. We had a huge problem, we're continually having a huge problem with contractors that, um, they have equipment failures, and they're out there, and then we're just not getting it done, and there's a potential, and if we don't street the, sweep the streets in accordance with the MS four permit, and get the winter sand or salt off the roadways, that they're, that they will come in and they'll, they'll potentially find us. So, um, the cost benefit, um, it starts out at about thirty-eight hundred dollars, benefit to us, and the reason for that is the high upfront cost of the equipment. We amortize that over borrowing, however, um, there is mortgage is paid because of the way we're doing a, a level, um, we're not doing a level payment like a mortgage. We're paying it off quicker, so we save more interest money, um, which I think is important. Um, so, there's that high cost, but it, over the next, it's a seven-year useful life. I think we can get ten out of it, to be honest. Um, over the next few years, the savings goes up slightly, uh, to the midpoint of useful life, but then our savings comes back down. And the reason for that is, uh, there's, there's less maintenance costs, well, the equipment is new, and as the equipment ages out, um, the maintenance costs go way up. So, um, but it is a, it is a savings, um, across the board every year for, for the seven years, and in year eight, it's a huge savings if we can make this thing go ten years, because then you're not paying any of the debt costs. Um, so-
Question about that.
Sure.
I think that sounds wonderful. Um, for something like this, are we going to keep it, since we're going to be buying it ourselves, are we going to be keeping it busy pretty much all the time, obviously, except for the winter?
Mm-hmm. So, so the answer is yes. It, not all the time, but we will do our annual cleaning, and there, there's a rumor with the new MS four permits that are coming out, we're at the end of that list, so we're several years away, um, that they're going to require more street sweeping. So, having this piece of equipment would actually increase that. I did not factor that into the cost-benefit analysis. I did include maintenance, fuel, employee costs, pension costs, healthcare costs, all of that.
I'm thinking in terms of if we're using it fifty percent of the time, does it make sense to share it with another town and get something?
So, that's, that's what I was going to say. We've had that last, we've shared a street sweeper in the past, and it really-
And have him share the costs for painting.
Well, it didn't work out well for us.
They didn't treat it very well.
Yeah, the other town, the other cities and towns would always come back. I wasn't here, but the information I'm getting from the staff that was, it would always come back to us broken, so. What I am considering is that we send the sweeper with staff, and they pay that hard, that whatever it costs. And it's, for them, if it's cheaper for us to do that-
Well, if they have no skin in the game, of course, they're going to-
Right, so, we send the sweeper with our own staff, and, and they pay that cost, but that staff member may be doing something else, so we're still working those numbers.
Can we make money on that?
We could, potentially, but, but we're still working those numbers.
Everybody can sit there, surely.
You know, if we have to hire additional staff, we won't make money.
But don't forget, let's not think too deeply about this. It's a street sweeper. We need it when it's sunny out and warm. They need it when it's sunny and warm.
Right.
So, it's not like we'll have it in the summer, they can have it in the winter.
Right.
No, and I'm not suggesting that, but, you know, if, it's not going to be sweeping, you know, all day, every day, then if there's an opportunity to use it fifty, fifty, or twenty-five, seventy-five, then it might make sense.
Service hours on at the lower term. I mean, you've thought about this.
Yeah, we have, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, we're right to, like, offer suggestions, but I think he's done his due diligence on this.
No, and I think that's great. I just want to make sure that we're thinking about, you know, those opportunities too.
Yeah, we are, we are.
Which sounds like we are.
If we're not going to make money with another town, we shouldn't do it.
Right, yeah, exactly, so. And, and it's rare and tearing the equipment, and your employee costs, we're still studying that, just to be clear. Um, we know for us, it's a, it's a cost saver, and we get to control it, and we don't have the issues with potential fines or anything else when we do this, so.
I just think whenever we make a capital equipment purchase, or things like that, then if we're, if it's something we're using fifty percent of the time, then it's an opportunity.
Generally speaking, if we're using it fifty percent of the time, the cost benefit doesn't say buy it. In this case, it does.
Yeah.
So, um, so, next item, street signage, it's twenty thousand dollars from free cash. It's an annual item, um, that we do. Next one is roadway improvements. This is the local funding supplement to our Chapter Ninety. I was forced to decrease that a hundred thousand dollars this year, um, just because we don't have extra available funds. So, um, we are getting more Chapter Ninety money, which is very good. I will thank the, the governor for that, and, and the Commonwealth, um, however, they should be giving us even more, so. That's, that's my side note comment on that, so.
How are we doing with our roadway, um, management pavement plan? How's it caught up?
So, that, that's working well. We've had several years to catch up, uh, but we are catching up, and some of the new technologies that we're implementing with the software and the hot, hot in place, uh, they're just, it's just remarkable, and, and we will be able to use that to our advantage. So, um, fencing, the next two items are for the, the pound. Uh, replaced fencing the gate, someone hit the gate. Uh, indications are it wasn't one of our staff, um, but we can't prove who it was, so I'm not going to go there. And then we need to paint it. Um, I will note, uh, for the board, we will be requesting a reserve fund transfer from advisory because we have a line item that's going to be over. There is a, a bit of a, um, road infestation that we need to deal with, but we don't have that number yet, so I, I cannot be presenting it this evening, but I just want to flag that for you. Um, the next item is to pave Magroom Park. Um, this is, uh, we, we looked at potentially doing this via CPC, but there's kind of a, um-
No bueno on pavement.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
No worries.
Um, so, we're going to have to do that, uh, using, uh, free cash to do that. Two cruises, the police department wants more. I can only afford two right now. Um, the property evidence room audit, we've talked about that in the past, but it was a ways back. We need to do that to make sure that we meet, um, the state standards on that, especially since we're going to be moving a lot of evidence to a new building in a couple of years. So, uh, active shooter training speaks for itself, TASER replacement, um, that is a free cash number. There is potential grant money with that. I'm going to highlight where there is grant money, where, so that we don't cut these out of the budget. Um, uh, and then moving to the library. The library is no longer our oldest building in town. I believe it's twenty-six years old coming up. Um, exterior painting, exterior door replacement, restroom partitions, carpet replacement in the staff areas, and carpet replacement in the main library, and water fountain replacement. Before you ask, I'm going to flag the restroom partitions, because I already flagged it, and I said I want a quote. We have quotes for them, and that is the cost, believe it or not. Um, I was a little bit surprised, um, at that cost, but if you've been in the library recently and you took going to the bathroom, some of the stalls aren't functional, the doors aren't working right because the partitions are failing, so we need to do this. Um, water fountain replacement, we talked about that real quick. Building roof, this is for the recycle center roof. Um, ambulance, um, uh, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in the ambulance fund to purchase a new ambulance. I want to tell the board that I authorized, uh, the fire chief to order this ambulance. This ambulance is ordered because it's a two-year lag time, and we have a clause in the contract with the company that if town meeting does not appropriate these funds, there's no, no charge to the town. And they're completely comfortable with that because of the long lag time. They know they can immediately sell it to someone else. So, um, I wanted to get us moving on that, um, with no impact to the town. Uh, schools, HVAC is the, another of the multi-phase project with the school department. Uh, it's a three hundred thousand dollar request this year. The PA system, this is phase one of a multiple phase for upgrading the PA system. Elementary flooring update, um, focused mainly on hobble log flooring. Uh, and then the one that the superintendent highlighted for you, which is a new item that was not previously on the capital plan that she asked to add, uh, was curriculum materials, which I encourage the schools to participate more in, uh, our capital budget, because, for two reasons. It doesn't add to- Because, for two reasons. It doesn't add to their budget in the sense that then they don't take it out in the following year perhaps. Or, you know, you want to focus on the capital items within capital. So, I strongly support this for them. Moving forward, election. We've moved all of the election equipment to the community center. What we found was that we probably should have planned a little better because that, that equipment that was previous at all the schools is a large amount of equipment. So, we're going to be buying a shed that is identical to the shed that's there now for storage of other equipment and the irrigation system and the wifi and exterior wifi and that for storing that equipment.
The election equipment, so some of that's electronic.
Yeah, but these are the big boxes. The electronic stuff is, so, yeah.
That's not going to just be in a shed.
No, correct. Yeah. These are the plastic boxes. I don't know what they're called, but. Information technology replacement schedule. This is a multi-year ongoing. We'll probably see this many, many years as we move through that and then we'll cycle through again. Building maintenance, we've talked about that. We have a number of projects that we have to make sure we're doing and to cover any unexpected costs there. Fiber optic, I want to take a moment and talk about this. The schools and some of our town buildings suffer from very, very low internet speeds and very, very low internet capacity. We have an opportunity for a fifty thousand dollar cost to connect all of our buildings within the town, including our water, some of our towers, the new police and fire station, our existing buildings with a complete townwide fiber optic network that will improve the cost. As you can tell, you can't do that for fifty thousand dollars, but we have applied for a grant that's hundreds of, two hundred thousand dollars that will allow us to, that we have a plan in place that we have spent for the grant and have a really strong possibility of getting it. If we don't get that grant, we won't move forward with this, but we need this fifty thousand as our local share of that grant. So, I strongly recommend that we move forward and approve that.
Have our hard lines, our internet hard lines been our bottleneck for internet speed? Or I know that they complain sometimes about the wifi in schools.
So.
You have the fastest internet speed you want, but if you have a bottleneck on your wifi.
So, and that's the challenge. We have one internet provider in the town and that's Comcast. We don't have multiple T ones like some of your better Boston-based communities. Natick, Wellesley, Nate Newton, anybody along the Route nine corridor has multiple internet connectivity. We're stuck from huge percentage of our town, super majority, close to a hundred percent with Comcast. And I don't, I'm not saying anything about Comcast. There's just no competition there.
And you've probably heard in this building, people get frustrated when they can't reach the public wifi because all of that bandwidth is dedicated to the staff wifi. Because we're running so much equipment now, so many things are designed to run wirelessly. That we're siphoning away from the public wifi accessing this building.
So, I mean, this all goes back to the question, which is, okay, we get this. Let's say we get this. This is great. We have the grant pays for, we only pay fifty thousand. We now have all this bandwidth through fiber optic internet. Do we have the infrastructure in place to still support the public, the schools, et cetera, when it comes to the wifi? Is that going to be a next stage?
So, the answer is yes, because we'll be connecting, have the capacity to connect to a second wifi system.
It would be a first for them.
Because that same, that same, right, exactly. That same fiber optic network that runs through Pembroke also will connect to the fiber optic network that connects hand over to the Rock. Regional, that's the regional dispatch center in Kingston or Duxburg. It will also allow us eventually to, long-term planning, to connect to other communities that will improve and make it redundant for us.
Just our voice over IP alone is sucking away a lot.
Yeah.
And we have had to adjust. And we're running out of, we're running out of.
Is this something, is this, is this a quality of infrastructure that will open up any doors to make it easier for a fiber optic company to allow more fiber optics for the community? For, instead of just having Comcast, Verizon, Fire.
So, we're, we're not, we're not doing that. We're putting in very little spares. We're only putting in enough spares for us, dark fiber, if you know what that means.
This is not going to make it an easier incentive for them to say, okay, now we'll open up to us the town more.
You never know what, what they may decide to do, but we're not, we're not adding the capacity to be able to do that. So.
Bill, real quick. For this grant, for the public knowledge, are you going through the Commonwealth with that? And is it going through the community compact that we've gone through before?
Yes.
Thank you.
Where am I? We talked about the fiber. Okay, so we're on to water. You know, the first one is Station two and three treatment plant, the design, the permitting and the bidding, what's moving forward. That's two point two five million. Replacement well for connection, one million generator at Glenwood. If you know what a SCADA system is, if you don't, I'll tell you. It's Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. That is at Glenwood. We need a generator there. So, water main upgrades, eight million dollars, water meter changeout program. If you understand what happens with a water meter changeout program, water meters over the years decline on what they read. So, you get a huge difference between your master meters and your individual totals from the households. When that difference gets so large, you get a large number on account of for water. DEP comes down on you. And there's a lot of impacts there that we just don't want to experience. So, we need to start a water meter replacement program. Well cleaning, that's a continuation of our well cleaning. It keeps our wells clean, keeps our production numbers up. And the final one is the asset management piece. There's three parts to this that I want to talk about. One part is in-kind, which is already budgeted for within our budget, so we don't need to budget for that because it's staff supporting the project. The fifty thousand dollars is our true number. What it's going to cost us, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a grant that we're applying for to do this. We want to make sure that we cover all of that. And the reason I've broken it out is so that we can see exactly what that is. We know where this is, what the, what the application will look like. Where some of the others, we know that there's grants available, but we're not sure other than the fiber optics that we talked about. So, that is the budget. It is a total of sixteen million, four hundred seventy nine thousand, three hundred ninety eight dollars. And it's broken out under funding sources as indicated on the bottom of the screen.
I do have a question talking about the water a little bit before we move on. And I don't want to go too deep into it because it's out of scope, but the water infrastructure master plan. I know Dan is here. I want to get into details on that, but I know we were targeting fall this year. Are we still on track for that? What's the situation?
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay. So, we're still on track for that and I know we're hiring a contractor to help us, consultants to help us with that. Is that already funded?
Yes, we funded that, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions on capital?
Motion to move favorable action on Article five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, so I will no longer be long-winded in any of the other articles. The Article nine is to fund a collective bargaining agreement that we had talked about earlier. The total cost is ninety two thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. Thirty one thousand from the ambulance fund. The rest is from an overlay reserve, which has already been released.
Motion to move favorable action on Article nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Article thirteen, I'm going to skip. You remove that from the warrant. Article seventeen, I'm going to skip. You remove that from the warrant. And, what?
Twenty one.
Twenty one. I am recommending favorable action. This changes the, the general bylaws. Under Article ten of the bylaws, the advisory committees, the advisory committee has worked diligently on this. You have the detail in your packet. I'm recommending favorable action.
Have a motion?
Motion to move favorable action on Article twenty one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So, Article twenty three, twenty four, I'm going to pass it on to Mr. Wondell. These are, these are your zoning articles. Article twenty three is the accessory dwelling units. I, from a town manager perspective, so you know, am recommending favorable action on Article twenty three.
Hi, Andy. Yeah, hi. We've got three articles on the warrant. All of them have been vetted through KP law. Also had requisite public hearings with public comment on them. First one is Article twenty three. State law has been passed that allows accessory dwelling units by right. So, currently in the town of Pembroke, we do have a bylaw on the books that allows accessory dwelling units with special permit. But the state has overruled that and people can get building permits for accessory dwelling units without the approval of the ZBA. There's a couple of differences in the new bylaws compared to the old bylaw, but again, we were kind of ready for this because we had a bylaw on the books already. So, the bylaw we had, it was for a blood relative, used by a blood relative, had to be owner occupied. Could be up to eight hundred square feet. The new state law allows for up to nine hundred square feet or one half of the existing living space in the existing dwelling. So, whichever is, is smaller. Also can be owned by or lived in by anyone. There's no blood relative requirement in this. Does not need to be owner occupied. So, the existing unit doesn't need to be owner occupied. Can also be detached. So, as long as you're following our local setbacks as required, you can have a detached dwelling unit. All the current Board of Health rules and regs regarding septic must still be adhered to. So, if you're adding a bedroom, and by the way, you can have as many bedrooms as you want if you can get them to nine hundred square feet. But if you're adding a bedroom and you have a three-bedroom house with a four-bedroom septic, it'll probably require you to get an extra distribution box, but you won't need to redo the septic. But again, that's going to be up to the Board of Health rules and regs. If you're adding a bedroom to the existing septic, you'll have to have the septic work done to manage that. Other than that, that's pretty much it. And it's, it's pretty popular. We're getting, I know in the building department, we're getting people coming in to pull building permits for ADUs. We're getting, I would say, maybe two a month so far. And the state law is in effect, so we just need to conform with the current state law. Any questions on the ADUs?
Are we ready with the form for that? A lot of towns are sidetracking people.
No, we don't, we don't, no. You just pulled the bill.
Well, they're, they're saying that you need a special permit.
You don't.
Certain towns, I'm not saying Pembroke. I'm saying I've been talking to a lot of people that are having trouble with.
That, that's a violation of the statute.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's been a lot of violations. And a lot of towns have put in at town meeting, things that the AG is going to throw up. I'm glad to see you're up to speed on a lot of.
Yeah, well, we, you know, we considered a couple of things. For instance, you know, some towns are allowing, you can have more than one ADU on a property, but the state allows you to do that through the special permitting process. So, it wouldn't be just pulling the building permit. Some towns restrict the use for like Airbnb's, that kind of thing, short-term rentals restricted. You can do that as a town. So, they do give you a little leeway on those things. But by and large, we're, we're going with the state, the state law.
And the fee, how is that structured? Do we know yet?
The fees are calculated by square footage and a number of other things.
Not to exceed a single family, family.
Right, it's a standard building permitting system that we use. So, it's really driven by bedroom, bathroom count and square footage, so.
Okay. So, later.
Great.
Motion to move favorable action on Article twenty three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article twenty four. This is something that we wanted to do for a while. So, this is to amend designing bylaws related to business B in, on Washington Street, north of Barker Street. So, if you see that district now, it goes four hundred, the setback from the wayline is four hundred feet for business B. The surrounding on both sides of that district is residential commercial and the residential commercial zone setback from the wayline is eight hundred feet. We want to match up the business B with the residential commercial district. It's just matching up the setback. So, it'll go from four hundred feet to eight hundred feet from the wayline, just like residence, residential and commercial.
Is there a reason for this other than conformity with an adjacent zoning?
Well, one is conformity with adjacent zoning, but since it is business B, setbacks can be a challenge for establishing what will be built there because it is setback narrowly compared to the residential and commercial district. So, it just gives anyone who wants to propose something in that zone, business B, a little bit more room for the setbacks.
So, this extends the lot and it's more inclusive for business?
Yes. And it's already a business district.
Those who already grandfathered in for the current businesses that are there are okay, correct? And what about if they go to these new businesses, try to go for a variance to shorten it up a little bit? Do we let them go just eight hundred and not the four fifty?
Oh, yeah. This, this bylaw would change it to the eight hundred feet.
Right.
Right? So, this, they wouldn't need to go for any variance.
Okay.
It also avoids, you know, going before the ZBA to ask for setback variance if you need to site a project or a building a certain way on that site for business use. You wouldn't need to go asking for a variance.
So, the town of Pembroke is being less restrictive in the business front, I guess?
Yeah.
Revenue.
Yes.
Motion to move favorable action on Article twenty three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay. So, this is Article twenty five. This, this came to us because this, this use is currently not defined in our allowed uses for the different zones in town. So, what we're asking to do is to have a public utility use be allowed by special permit with site plan approval in Residence A, residential commercial, business district, District A, and Center Protection districts. So that if a project comes up by a public utility, that use has been defined so we can have some site plan approval over it. Major concern for that is abutters, protecting abutters, making sure that the right screening is done. Things like hours of operation or when the work can be performed. All of that can be regulated through site plan review. So, we'd like to have that. All of our surrounding towns do this. They have a public utility use allowed in their zoning bylaws. And if we don't do it, it's a risk, not a very high risk, but it is a risk that a public utility can go right to the state and bypass all of our zoning bylaws and do the project anyway, without any oversight by the planning board. So, we're, we're doing this so we have some oversight.
And Andy, just, so you know, at our last meeting for the public too, National Grid came here, several representatives, and they were advocating for this because National Grid wants this as well, so that they, they know what the rules and regulations are and deal with the local town. Because right now, absent any rules, they have to go to state empty.
Right.
So, it's, it's better for them and better for the community, so.
Yep.
I'm in favor of that.
And by doing it through special permit, it gives the planning board a lot of flexibility and a lot of ability to exercise judgment as opposed to walking it into a specific place or zoning overlays somewhere here, there in the town, which maybe the, the public utility doesn't want. They want to put it somewhere else. That could be really restrictive, but you can drive them in this direction or that.
Yeah, it's hard for us to anticipate where these projects would go. Like, we wouldn't know where any of these projects would go. And citing them in a specific zone, I think would be a huge mistake because the usage, quite frankly, you know, we're eighty-five percent residential in Pembroke and eighty-five percent of the utilities are residential, used by residential. So, public utility is going to go where the public utilities are used. So, we wanted to cover it in all the zones that we could.
Move favorable action on Article twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Okay, so that includes the annual town meeting warrant. I'm going to jump right into the special.
Jump away.
Jump away, she says. So, I'm going to be requesting no action on Articles two and three. I'm not recommending you remove them from the warrant in the event that something does happen and we have an unpaid bill show up or something that we don't know about tonight. However, Article one is departmental transfers. We have personal services for the assessors, select board and town manager personal services, town accountant personal services, inspectional services, personal services, all from overlay surplus. These are a result of contract settlements. These are a result of contract settlements, solid waste, debt service, $44,700 from the solid waste surplus, which is otherwise known as retained earnings, and water debt service of $146,815 from water surplus. The final two on the debt schedule are a result of paydowns from bond anticipation notes when we roll them to permanent borrowing.
Any questions?
Your recommendation?
Recommendation favorable.
Move favorable action on Article One.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then Articles Two and Three, I'm recommending no action on either at this time.
I would move to take no action on Articles Two and Three.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
So, you have now taken action on all of the warrant articles for the annual and the special, so you do have to move forward, vote and sign the warrants.
Do I have a motion?
Moved to sign the annual and special within the annual warrants for the annual town meeting to be held May 13th, 2025 at 7:00 PM at Pembroke High School located at Eighty Learning Lane.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
All righty, board action items. What do we have next?
Do you want me to give you a quick overview? Is that helpful on the first one?
Sure, sure, sure.
So, the first one is to consider a special event permit request from Soundcheck Studios. I believe Mr. Herman is here. This is an annual event, is a one-time-a-year event, and all of the paperwork is in order.
Thank you. Hi, Andrew.
Hi.
Do you want to come on up?
I certainly do. It's a pleasure. It's been a couple of years. And yeah, we're looking to put on some more outdoor concerts. We haven't since COVID, which we had 114 in our park and that.
Wow.
Sorry, I'm suffering a little PTSD there. But thanks to you guys and we appreciate all your support there. And just to stay competitive, the summer's our toughest season. We got our friends down in Marshfield that we have to compete with, okay? And then we got the beach in summer and all that. So, we just, and they've been some tough summers, so we're just trying to crack the code to a tricky business. And so, we were asking for a July 19th date. We already had the band, the headlining band booked, and we wanted to do a few bands during the day, like 12 to 8:00 PM, and then take the show inside just like normal. So, not too much noise. I don't think we should be getting too many, too many calls. But, so our plan is just to have an event during the day and then move it inside at night.
Nice. What's your headline band?
Big Something, they're called.
Nice.
Yeah, they're awesome. Like an eight, nine, 10-piece band, horns, amazing.
Perfect. Any questions?
And then a bunch of locals.
Nice.
Yes. Bill, is Soundcheck Studios in good standing with this annual event? Have we gotten many complaints?
So, nothing, we've had one complaint from a resident, but nothing major compared to others. They've been very good.
And I know in the past they've notified the abutters and all that.
Yes.
You papered them like crazy, which is wonderful. I appreciate that.
Yes. I heard the magic word, "butters," during, while we were waiting, and I, I realized I've been rusty. I'm a little rusty on the details. But yeah, we'll do the abutters notices and, and all that, and the, and the barriers around the outside. I think it provided a map where we'll make sure that no cars can, you know, penetrate the area. We actually were, I mean, we can, we're going to work with the fire, fire and police chiefs to work all that out, I believe, if, if proved.
And another one for me is, how's business been going since I haven't seen you in a while?
Oh, wow. You know, we just hit our 1,000th show in January and, which is crazy, so, and geez, it's just like any business in America, it's tough, you know? It's tricky. The, that, that top line, the bigger it gets, the more people tug at it. It's tough making a, a good bottom line. And I don't think that's isolated to Soundcheck Studios or the music industry. I think it's America, it's all across the board. So, but, you know, and really just, you really, you really just got to crush it if you want to make, make, make profit. And so, that's the plan. And, and the first quarter was awesome. And so, business is good, is, is the bottom line. And, and, but just like anything, it's, you know, up and down.
Yeah, I mean, Soundcheck is awesome.
Oh, thanks.
You guys have added, I've seen Echoes of Floyd.
Oh, yeah.
Big Pink Floyd fans, so they put on an awesome show.
We there for the lasers.
Oh, I was just going to say, you guys added lasers and light show. It's really, you guys are really kicking it up over there, so you guys have a really awesome show going.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I spent 23 years in finance and this place freed me from that, so if nothing else, that was accomplished. And, you know, it, it's, it's, it's an honor and privilege to do this for, for our customers every week and I, I, I'm grateful every day.
Nice.
And my last question, is there any way that the Pembroke Chamber can help promote your events?
That's a good question. We still get every show, way too many people, like, "How long have you guys been here? This is great." Only about seven years. That's a good question. I don't know. What, what difference?
I have a representative behind you, just in case you want to speak with him.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm open to ideas, all ideas, and any help, we, we, we accept. But love to talk and see how we can, because I do think we are, have become really a communal space that provides a lot of psychological services, providing breaks to the daily rigor that we all grind away at. So, and, and, and I'd love to, love to chat.
Well, we love you and you're a wonderful neighbor.
Oh, thank you. All right, you'll get the notes.
Do I have a motion?
I would move to grant the application of Andrew and Eric Herman of Soundcheck Studios located at 150 Corporate Drive for a special permit for a live band from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM on July 9th, 2025, subject to the approval of the Pembroke Police Chief. Yes.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys. You're all invited.
Everybody's invited.
We'll see you there. All righty, up next, discussion and vote, ice cream truck, mobile food permit, Jay's Ice Cream Truck, Josh Peters, formerly Stephen Burt. Hi.
Hey, how are you?
How are you?
Not bad.
Welcome.
So, yeah, Josh Peters, I've owned, me and my wife own Jay's Ice Cream Truck. This is our fifth year now.
Wow.
We have the truck out on Duxbury Beach, and when Steve reached out to us, said he was retiring, we said, "Sure, why not? Let's get some more ice cream trucks." It's been a little crazy ride, ice cream trucks, but it's been fun. And Steve suggested I reach out to Pembroke so that we can go through the neighborhoods like, like Steve did. So, here I am.
So, all of the paperwork is in order and I'm recommending approval.
How long did you say you've had an ice cream truck for?
This is our fifth year.
Wow.
Yeah.
Nice. Does anybody have any questions?
All the way from Benton Street, it's up west of here.
Yeah.
I know it well.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to grant application of Josh, Joshua Peters to a business as Jay's Ice Cream Truck to engage in ice cream truck vending, vending and operating an ice cream truck throughout the town, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to dusk on Sunday, from 11:00 AM to dusk, subject to Health Department inspection and Police, Police Chief's approval.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have discussion and vote, one-day liquor license application for East Pembroke Community Club, May 4th, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM at 27 Taylor Street, EPCC, East Pembroke Community Club. Do I have anybody here to speak for this? No?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so either.
All the paperwork is in order, Bill?
Yes, it is, and we're recommending approval.
Perfect.
Move to approve the request of the East Pembroke Community Club for a one-day liquor license under Master General Law, Chapter 138, Section 14, to serve alcohol from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM on May 4th, 2025 at 27 Taylor Street.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. This is right before Fish Fry, if anybody would like to attend. And last up, vote to accept the minutes of April 9th, 2025.
Discussion. Rick, you were there at that.
I was there, I was at the last one too, when I was listed on there, but yes, I was.
Right. So, yeah, I just, I would move to accept the minutes of April 9th, 2025 with the amendment to include Rich Flynn as present.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Do we have any announcements tonight?
Yes. The one that I have is, those are two things. The council, sorry, Senior Services will be having Kentucky Derby Party Wednesday, April 30th, 12:00, 12:00 PM. They'll have food club for 20 guests catered for, for food truck, best derby hat. Please contact Senior Services in the community center if you'd like to participate because they only have so much for 50 guests. And Summer Concert Series is kicking off May 28th at 1:00 PM at the community center with the Patsy Cline Tribute Show.
Is that everything?
That's it for right now.
Anyone else?
Just real quick.
Sure.
Early voting for the annual town election starts the end of next week. Check out the town's website on your, on the front page, it'll give you all of the dates. There's approximately 10 days that would be in this building. And town meeting Tuesday, the 13th, at Pembroke High School. There's some confusion about that. The moderator wanted it at the high school, so it's going to be held at the high school. Make sure that's what the warrant says. I want to make sure everybody understands that's where it's at.
Will we blast out early voting schedules and whatnot on social media?
Yeah, I have been doing that. I did that on a TV show this week and we will continue to do that. We're going to ramp it up as we get on by closing.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Liaison updates. Fraser Townley, Pembroke Chamber, come up and tell us what you have.
Thank you. So, it's a little later.
Well, thank you for waiting.
I shall be brief. We have some events in May. May is a very busy month for, for all of us, actually. But we, we're going to be sponsoring the Fish Fry, so we want to make everyone aware. You've already brought it up, but the Fish Fry is a big event on the 4th. On the 6th, we will have a social event at New England Village where we're trying to get the community to attend New England Village so they can understand what the New England Village is all about. New England Village are also looking for, they're always looking for money, so they're looking for more and more people to invest in New England Village. So, we as the Chamber are reaching out to our members to just have everybody getting to know each other and putting their hands in the pockets, hopefully. So, you're all welcome. Look forward to seeing you all there. And then on the 8th, we have a small event, the Candidates Forum at the library. That will be broadcast live on Channel 9 and also live on the YouTube channel for the local scene. We'll have three candidate groups. We'll start with the school committee. We will then move to the Board of Health. And then finally, for the main event, Steve, it'll be the Select Board.
That's my favorite part.
I thought you might like that. We were going to have the Planning Department in there. We scheduled everything to have the Planning Department have a role, but as there's only one person running, we decided to dedicate that time to open questions. So, unlike last year, we will have an open question for the Select Board at the end of the event. We're still looking for questions, though. So, if anyone in the town has a question for the candidates, please email them to our email address. I believe this year it's pembrokeforum25@gmail.com.
Open questions just for the Select Board or for all three?
It's going to, okay, so we have to think about the timing of this. So, if we have open questions and the, the school committee and the Board of Health have moved off the stage, so to speak, it might get messy if someone's, I'm going to moderate it. So, if someone's got a, a really good question for the Board of Health and they're still in the room, I'll find a way to get that question asked and answered. I'm not there to ask the question, I'm there to make sure they get answered, so.
So, you're going to try?
Oh, yeah, yeah. But I, I think personally speaking from what I'm, I'm trying to measure it from what I'm hearing online, I, I think the Select Board race is the one that, I called it the main event for a reason, so. So, that's that event. We will be promoting that event on Kevin Tocchi's radio show on the 28th. So, Peter and I and Jonathan Grabowski from New England Village will be on Kevin Tocchi's Show, 7:02, 7:30 on WATD. And then finally, finally at the end of the month, we will be donating to, we've got the scholarship fund, there's many other people, it's not just the Chamber of Commerce that are, are giving to the high school for their scholarship funds, but we will be presenting checks at the, at the high school on the 29th of, of May. So, that's.
Is that the awards night?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. I think it's the 29th, is that correct?
I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, everyone says, not sure when I asked them.
Because it's usually in early June.
It'll be the end of the month, I know that much.
Remind me what time the event is at the, at New England Village?
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
And I believe at the last meeting you, you guys had, you signed off the liquor license, so.
Yes, we did.
So.
Welcome. All good.
Yeah, so it's, it's, the last time we had that event, it was well-attended. We had Catherine Altra, Matt Moratori, and Ken Suesi showed up, and they were all, Matt hasn't, but Kathy's and Ken have said they'll be there, plus Dylan Fernandez. So, there'll be a good crowd.
Nice.
And we look forward to welcoming you all there.
Hey, can you let the public know about the CEO's moving on from New England Village also?
Sure, yes, she's resigned. And she's moving on at the end of June. She will be there on the night. We have a task force set up. I'm on the board at New England Village and I'm on the task force for finding a new CEO. So, right now, we're going through the selection process of the companies that are going to be helping us find a new CEO. But, you know, if there's, if there's anyone locally tuning in who thinks they could take that role, get in touch because it's, we employ 250 people. We have 80 residents. We have an additional 80-day, I don't want to call them, they're not patients, but they're day people coming in for activities. So, it's, I think now that Stop and Shop's gone, I think we're definitely the biggest employer in town. And a, and an essential employer, in my opinion. So, yeah, it's, the more people come to the event, the more they're going to fully appreciate what we do and the tasks that we have. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, and thank you for anyone who attended the library and to the, the people, that was a big event for us as well, and that was well-attended, so.
Library Foundation.
The Library Foundation, that was, that was pretty cool. Good.
It went well.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other further, any further liaison updates?
Yes, for Senior Services. Just wanted to make sure that, they had a meeting last week going through changing their mission statement to something more meaningful for what they do and what more seniors do. The last mission statement pretty much gave them that seniors were here, but not really engaging. So, they're changing that up to make sure that we understand that our seniors are quite engaged. I've got 90-year-olds coming around to the community center, still driving, but we have 73%, over 70, who still, you know, are driving around and with the help of certain folks. know, are driving around and with the help of certain folks. I mean, it's amazing with our public transportation. They did a triad event recently, was well-attended. Manicures and pedicures began on April 20th for seniors, and this was a signup month, it's going to probably be a month of service, and this event was booked up in 15 minutes. So that's a wonderful idea, and they're waiting to do it again. Hopefully, I'll be able to put that out further. And that is it for the time being.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business?
Yes, actually. I was talking to Patricia Marsters. She's a friend of the community center. She also does the angel gowns. She brought up an interesting point about the fire stations in town, the signs for like the drop-offs.
Mm-hmm.
Is there?
There's a term for it.
Do we have them?
Safe baby?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Because the fire stations that are not attended have, this is not a safe baby.
Do we do have those signs up there?
We did, the last I checked.
So they're still there?
So they are still there.
I have to check, but I bought new signs within the last year.
Okay. Let's double-check because I'm hearing that maybe there's some missing signs or something.
Okay. Well, we did, we did buy signs because, and to make sure that people understood that where they are and where they're not.
Yeah.
Because they just went in a few years ago.
Just to be clear, the only safe baby drop-off zone is the main station here on Center Street. All of our other stations are call stations and not attended 100%.
Well, I think that's our concern, is that people might not know that.
We had signs. We did put signs up. So I will double-check.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that everything?
That's all I got.
Community comments from the board? Community comment from our guests?
All right. Upcoming issues. May 7th at 7:00 P. M. We have Kathleen Kelby with a directed donation acceptance for the Easter egg hunt. May 7th at 7:15, a door-to-do solicitation permit application from Seaport Pest Solutions and Power Home Remodeling. Also on May 7th at 7:30, joint meeting with town moderator, advisory and town meeting preview. Also, May 7th, Recreation Senior Services Director Lance Kennedy and Diane Co. With a use proposal for 144 Center Street. And on May 13th at 7:00 P. M. Is our annual town meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Just one note?
Sorry?
I want to just take a moment to thank my intern, Colin Murphy. He is interning with us for a couple of months and doing a remarkable job. So thank you, Colin, very much.
Thanks for coming tonight. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.